Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I call the City Council Committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, September 18th, to order. A lot of things going on. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If you please join Alderman. Tim Dunn in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
What's the leadings? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crupp, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll for tonight.
R. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton. Lynch.
Here.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. Welcome. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For folks in here, especially if you have a cellphone, I'd simply ask if you'd put it on silent or turn it off so it simply doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight on any particular agenda item or at the end, please be recognized by the Chair or the Mayor. Please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward, or an address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. I'd ask that you please address the council. The diocese here is one body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Is there any city administrator update? Ms. Gleason.
Just a reminder that Saturday morning, we do have a flood discussion at 8:30.
Yep. Roger that. Saturday flood. Okay. Thank you. We have five public hearings this evening, two under community development and three under Public Works. The first will do community development. Alderman Reinarts will lead these. Alderman Reinarts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two topics under community development. First one is public hearing for case ROW 24-04, being the request of Jack's Homes Improvement Company to vacate the unimproved right-of-way located west of Marquette Street between West Seventh Street and the mid-block alley, Ward Three. Is there any public with comment? Any counsel? Motion to close the public hearing. The second item is...
Take a vote. Say it all.
Take a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second item. Public hearing on the consolidated plan, annual performance evaluation, right for the year, report for the year, ending June 30th, 2024, all wards. Any public with comment? Seeing none, counsel? I move to close the hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Reinarts. Next is Public Works. There's three. Alderman Rick Dunn will lead these public hearings. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Harrison Street and 15th Street traffic signal replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Adler Theater HVAC upgrade project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2025-2026 contract sewer repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is petition communications. Anyone, counsel? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I want to say thank you to all those that came out and supported me at my block party union's unity in the community, and it was a really great turnout, and I want to thank Alderman Burkholder and Alderman Jobchin for stopping out just to see the festivities that I had going on, and I look forward to unity in the community. My third year next year will be in the same location as well. Thank you for that. And I also want to make a comment of, you can't make this stuff up. I'm not going to give you guys a story because I've told the story behind the scenes to my colleagues, but y'all know that Davenport is a racially insensitive city. You guys know that. You can sit here and say that you don't know, or you can sit here and say that it doesn't affect you. It does affect you. Why it affects you is when you guys sit idly by and you see the mistreatment of one of your neighbors, one of your coworkers, one of your friends, when you sit there and you just watch that, you're part of it. Just so you know, you're part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just a fun event, and then something a little more serious to talk about. So I just wanted to remind everybody, Neyhant Marsh is hosting a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, September 25th, at 10:00 a.m. They have a new operations building and a new mile-long east trail. We had the good fortune of having a presentation from Neyhant Marsh at our management update week before last, and he did come and speak to the third ward meeting on Monday. It's amazing what they're doing. It was the largest urban marsh, and now nobody will ever catch up with them in the Upper Mississippi because they've expanded. They've been able to buy new land to expand this, which is going to help just the natural area. It's going to help with flooding, and so it's really terrific. And they have raised a lot of money to do this during the pandemic time and everything else. So that is Wednesday, September 25th, at 10:00 a.m., and it's located at 220 Wapalo Avenue in Davenport. So I hope you can come and join them. Now, the other thing I wanted to talk about tonight is a little more serious, and I hope it's short, but I just wanted to read out a statement. Recently, instances of members of the public being aggressively approached at the end of council meetings has been brought to my attention by the people who have been impacted. These events occurred both in the chamber and on city hall property. In one case, an officer intervened. Members of the public attending the meeting should feel safe entering and exiting the chambers, this building, and anywhere on public property. Most people, I believe, understand and want that as well. I think we all want that. I have spoken to Davenport Police Department and city administration about my concerns, and I ask that in the future that they keep an eye out. And I would ask if anyone in the chamber experiences or observes this happening, if they think it's happening, then reach out to an officer or staff for assistance, and you can always reach out to me as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion, which is community development, public works, public safety, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Reinarts will lead, and Alderman Reinarts, please.
Thank you. One item this evening. First item is first consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-04, being the request of Jack's Homes Improvement Company to vacate the unimproved right-of-way located west of Marquette Street between West Seventh Street and mid-block alley, Ward Three. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? Hearing nothing. I move to close. What? I move to close this item, and I ask Alderman McGinnis to set the agenda.
I'll make a motion to put this item on the consent agenda for next week. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Reinarts and Alderman McGinnis. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving street, lane, and public ground closure requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Davenport Community School District, West High School Homecoming Parade, 3505 West Locust Street, 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, closures which are police-controlled. North Clark Street from West 15th Street to West 18th Street. West 18th Street from North Clark Street to North Elsie Avenue. North Elsie Avenue from West 18th Street to West Lombard Street. West Lombard Street from North Elsie Avenue to North Nevada Avenue. North Nevada Avenue from West Lombard Street, south to West High School. Please note this to be voted on later on in this agenda. Second, Scott Searle Yo-Yo Man Neighborhood Block Party, 519 West 16th Street, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Sunday, September 29th, 2024, closure, West 16th Street from Gaines Street to Scott Street. Next, Davenport Community Schools, North High School Homecoming Parade, Thursday, October 3rd, 2024, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., closures which are police-controlled, northbound Division Street from Wood Intermediate to Northwest Boulevard. Northwest Boulevard from Division Street to West 56th Street. West 56th Street to Oak Brook Road. Oak Brook Road to West 57th Street. West 57th Street to Marquette Street. Marquette Street to West 60th Street. West 60th Street to Myrtle Street. Myrtle Street to West 59th Street. West 59th Street to Vine Street. Vine Street to West 58th Street. West 58th Street to Gaines Street. Gaines Street to the finish at North High School. Next, St. Paul the Apostle Trunkard Tree, 10:07 East Rush Home Street, 3:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Friday, October 25th, 2024, closure, East Rush Home Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. Next, Brian Dorfeld Village Zombie Run, Village of East Davenport, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Saturday, October 26th, 2024, closures beginning at 6:00 a.m., East 11th Street from Jersey Ridge Road to Mound Street. East-West Alley between East 11th Street and East 12th Street, and Mound Street and Jersey Ridge Road. Mound Street from East 11th Street to East 12th Street. Mound Street from the alley to East 12th Street until 12:30 p.m., and then beginning at 8:30 a.m., Bell Avenue from East 29th Street to Elm Street. Eastbound Elm Street from Bell Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road. Southbound Jersey Ridge Road from Elm Street to East 11th Street. And last, City of Davenport Halloween Parade Downtown, 11:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Sunday, October 27th, 2024, closures. East Third Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive. Pershing Avenue, Iowa Street, and Leclerc Street from Second Street to Fourth Street. Third Street from Pershing Avenue to Ripley Street. Second Street from Iowa Street to Ripley Street. Ripley and Main Streets from Second Street to Fourth Street. East-West Alley between Scott and Ripley Streets and Second Street and River Drive. East-West Alley between Harrison and Main Streets and Second Street and River Drive. Perry Street from East Second Street to River Drive, beginning at 2:00 p.m. Brady and Harrison Streets from River Drive to Fourth Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone with counsel? Seeing none, that item, move on. Item number two, motion approving noise variance requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Davenport Community Schools, West High School Homecoming Parade, Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Please note this to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Davenport Community Schools, North High School Homecoming Parade, Thursday, October 3rd, 2024, 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. And last, City of Davenport Halloween Parade Downtown, 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m., Sunday, October 27th, 2024, outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from counsel? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, veterans of foreign war, F.W. Galbreth Post 828 Canteen, 101 South Linwood Avenue, outdoor area, new license, license type Class F liquor on premises. Next, The Wandering Crowd, 101 West River Drive, temporary outdoor event, license type Class C liquor. Next, Wise Guys Pizza and Pub, new license/ownership, license type Class C liquor. And Dave and Buster's, 5248 Elmore Avenue, new license, license type Class C liquor. And then there are those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from counsel? No one with their mind on D and B? All right. I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn to please set our agenda.
I'll make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda excluding items for Davenport West Homecoming to be voted on later on this agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next area is Public Works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the Veterans Memorial Park Phase Two Overlook Package V Landscape Project by Hawkeye Pavement Corporation in the amount of $334,504. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution awarding a contract for the main library renovation Phase Two project, Swanson Construction of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $271,125. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Harrison Street and 15th Street traffic signal replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Adler Theater HVAC upgrade project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2025-2026 contract sewer repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a professional service agreement for engineering services for the design of the water pollution control plant, digester improvement project, to Stanley Consultants in the amount of $1,506,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation's FY 2026 Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program and State Transit Assistance Special Projects Program for financial assistance to conduct a transit planning study of Scott County. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion approving change order number one with Jim Schroeder Construction of Bellevue, Iowa, for the Utah Avenue Bridge over Duck Creek Replacement Project in the amount of $62,155.72. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion awarding a professional services agreement for engineering services for the 2025 high-volume roadway resurfacing project to Willett, Hoffman, and Associates of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $91,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a motion awarding a professional services agreement for engineering services for the Grand Avenue Resurfacing Project to Shire Hattery of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $86,700. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 11 is a motion awarding a professional services agreement for engineering services for the Main Street Resurfacing Project to MSA Professional Services Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $84,010. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Sure will. I'd like to make a motion to set all 11 items to the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes Public Works for this evening. Your Honor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next and final area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Burkholder will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Alderwoman Burkholder and I have three items on the finance agenda. The first item is a resolution adopting a code of conduct for members of the Davenport City Council and the mayor. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? If so, please step forward. As a reminder, state your name, ward, or address, and you will have five minutes.
Yes, Paul Vasquez, 3rd Ward, City of Davenport. Just a quick question. I mean, it's a very good thing, of course. Why is it under finance? It's just something I'm just curious about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please step forward, state your name, ward, or address.
My name is Vance Zachary Davis Senior. I had a appointment today with the mayor to be here. My friend Faith, she got run over by a train. I was there. I saw the whole thing.
Sir, this is specific to a code of conduct, this item?
Oh.
That's fine. We will have an opportunity for the public to speak later on at the end of this meeting where you can speak to any item.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, Your Honor.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the code of conduct? Please step forward, state your name, ward, or address.
I'm Dennis Platt, and I'm in the 6th Ward. And I'm not sure this even applies, but I wanted to address the rules of discussion that you talked about yesterday at your work session, and what that has to do with is public speaking and how that will be handled and the length of it and all that kind of thing.
This item, sir, is specific...
This is not related?
No, sir.
Okay.
So this specifically is a code of conduct, which is addressing how the council and the mayor should behave. The actual, what you're referring to, will hopefully come up on an agenda item in the near future in terms of the rules of order, but it was established that we are following the 2015 resolution as of now.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Anyone else wishing to address the code of conduct? Please state your name, ward, or address.
Marion Johansson, Ward Number One. Are these going to be available to the public once the code is out there so that we can monitor, also monitor y'all behavior? I know this is not funny, but I really am interested if it's going to be allowed to the public. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Leconne Dixon, 7th Ward. I understand you wanted to have a code of conduct. However, I hope this code of conduct is... I feel like there has been a lot of racially impacted situations, and I hope that this does not tighten the lips on when we have situations that contain racism because I just feel like that is something that is brought up when people passionately speak. Well, because one alderman has passionately spoke about things that has happened to him, so I hope this does not put a gag on people expressing how they have dealt with racism in their everyday life, especially with being a person that sits on the dais.
Anyone else? Please step forward, name, ward, and or address.
Jane Dux, 5th Ward, 2111 East Lombard Street. I'm sorry I'm late. Apologize for that. I asked some other people if the resolution was read out loud. She didn't think so. There's no copies of it, so it would be really nice if we knew what the resolution was that addresses your code of conduct. One point to be, you know, how you're responsive to us, the citizens, kind of like what Ms. Dixon was just speaking about, but I've sent emails, I've sent text messages, I've spoken in person, and I never get a response except for my alderman is very responsive to me. But you all represent the whole city, especially... Anyway, what's the code of conduct for responsiveness to the constituents, your voters, to the citizens? You know, how should you have to respond in a timely fashion? Whether we're asking a question here in person and you don't respond, or we send you a text message, an email, a Facebook message, whatever it is, we don't get any responses. So I think you need to have something in that. So is this something that's going to be voted on tonight, or is this a three-week agenda item or something? Or when will we get to see the resolution that you're going to vote on regarding your code of conduct? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name, ward, or address.
Michelle Shagna, and my questions are the same regarding what exactly does it read regarding the code of conduct for the council people and the mayor? And if there's a difference between the code of conduct for council people versus the mayor, can we get specifics of what that is considering the responsibilities are different? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Prior to going to my colleagues, I would take a point of privilege, one, kind of address some of the questions that came up just now. One, why is it on finance? If an item doesn't fit Public Works, Public Safety, or Community Development, it ends up on finance. So that's why it's on the finance agenda. Finance tends to be the catch-all if it doesn't fit to the other three categories. The second question, available to the public? Absolutely. It is posted with the agenda online. Every week when the agenda is posted and/or an amended agenda is posted, all the supporting documents are there. So if you go online and if you click on it, it gives you the option of only downloading the plain agenda or the agenda with text or agenda with all the attachments. Absolutely, the attachments and not just the resolution, but the actual proposed code of conduct is available to everyone online. It will not be voted on tonight. No. I would be respectfully requesting that Alderwoman Burkholder put it on for discussion. As I know, some of my colleagues may have some questions, and I would like the opportunity for us to look at it to see if there's any changes or amendments that need to be made prior to a vote taking place. And I think that covers... Oh, the other question. It is applicable to council and mayor the same. There is no distinction between council member or mayor on the code, so all should be held to the same standard. With that said, I would like to thank the committee. I was on the committee, but I want to thank my colleagues that were on the committee, which included Alderman Jobchin, Alderman Reinarts, and Alderman Kelly. We worked together, met several, several times, went through many different drafts, taking back feedback of the colleagues to try to put something together. So with that, I would like to hear from my colleagues. Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Alderwoman Newton. Also with that, this is a resolution, so it's only a one-vote cycle. So next week will be the vote, and then there we go. And then to one of the other points, you know, does it address, you know, the responsiveness of alderpeople? No, it does not. I mean, that's something in which the constituents, you know, will monitor, right? I mean, and every two years, you get the opportunity to vote. If your alderman does not respond to your calls, does not responsive, I would hope you would do what you could to get a better solution in here. What we're trying to do is find a way to kind of be a self-governing body, right? Unfortunately, we've had multiple examples over the last couple of years that people sitting on the council haven't really done the things that we view as desirable, and And there hasn't really been a mechanism to address that. And we, I've said this before, we didn't recreate the wheel on this. We got some information from other municipalities within the state of Iowa. And actually, something I learned is that the city of Davenport had a code of conduct already. Two thousand and four motion that was passed, Alderwoman Guinness wrote on that. So, you know, it's something that fell off into the ether somewhere, right? Because one of the things that this document does is it includes an attestation, right? Us as council people should be familiar with this. We should be able to sign off on this and acknowledge that, hey, yep, there is a way in which I should behave as, as an elected member of this body. That two thousand and four document had, had a signed attestation, page two, but I don't think there's probably anybody sitting up here that has ever seen that. So kind of in the spirit of yesterday, when we were talking about reviewing different resolutions and, and some of these things on the regular front, you know, recommendation from our corporation council as we were talking about another topic. This is something that hopefully the way in which we have this set up, we'll be able to do that. And so that future councils will be able to be very aware of the things that they're supposed to do. And then there's still that mechanism for which if people start stepping out of line, that, that we can act. And I'm hopeful that, to another young lady's point, that this doesn't stifle people that are talking about the injustices that they see. It allows them to speak freely, and then we can then act upon some of that misbehavior. So that's what, that's what my hopes are. And, you know, I too thank my colleagues for, for working on this. You know, not only the four of us that were part of the committee, but other council members that have taken the bite at the apple as we presented this at a couple of management updates ago. And then, you know, again, yesterday had a little opportunity to speak on this and, go from there. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kelly.
I can wait.
Yeah, I don't want to jump in front of one of the committee members, but, okay. Sorry. I do want to also thank the people who worked on this. This was not a simple thing at all to do, and it's necessary from the perspective of someone who wasn't on the committee, and I fully support this. You know, we, what I think we experienced is, to Alderman Jobjen's point, was that there was, when there were issues with council, it was, there was no mechanism to self, as, as Alderman Jobjen said, to self-govern ourselves. When you go and read it, and please download it, it's about five pages. It, it, there is a mechanism where we can. We, I think, I feel like we put our staff in a very awkward position of having to deal with things that were inappropriate, and that is not of equal, an even balance of power at all. And so this is why I think this is very important, and I certainly support it. I, I had talked yesterday, and when we, we did look at this in July, after they had worked very hard, we came and looked at it, and then there were some things, some tweaks then. I, I had two things that I brought up yesterday that I think, that, that I've talked to corporate council about and to people on the committee, and it is that we clarify that there are, there are boards and commissions, private ones or public ones, that those of us on council, we, when we're not here and doing our work of our ward, we get assigned to these boards. And so to make sure that it was clear that we can still vote as part of the body on those things, but not anything that's of a personal nature, to clarify, because there is a difference. There's are things that we have to do as aldermen, and it doesn't really make sense that we wouldn't be able to vote on those. So that one, and the other thing was that, one of the things that was made very clear in our HR training this fall, that we all, we were, was offered to us, we undertook, was that we are mandatory reporters for any harassment or abuse of staff, of other council people, anybody that is attached to the city, if we see it, we have to report it. And that was not clear when I first came on council. So I wanted, I wanted to make sure there was some, but now it is clear. And so we can't say to someone, are you okay? We have to go and officially report it. That's a mandatory reporter. And so that was made clear, and so I wanted to make sure that this code of conduct, that within it, it states that it does not supersede our requirement of doing that. And so that was one of the other, the only other thing I had, had asked to, to look at. So, but again, I, I thank the committee for their work. They worked very hard, and they came back with a great document for us. So thank you very much.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I was just going to say thank you to my cohorts that I worked with, but now I have a litany of things to say. I must be a ward of the state, because where is my reporting? So when I speak, be clear that when I speak, it's never what I saw. This is my life. This is what I'm living. This is what I'm going through. So I feel bad for the employees that go through the things that they go through, but you have never, ever had to go through some of the BS. I'm gonna be good tonight, but you know, I want to light it up. You have never gone through the BS that I go through just being a large black man in America. And this is not the time for that, but I'm just telling you, you can't sit here and tell me, because they're, they're paying attention to it now, but do you know how many times I've had to almost knock my colleagues over the head when somebody has said something inappropriate in front of me, but instead of them saying something because they're the colleagues and we work together, guess is what they do? What are you looking at me for? They said it. Say something to that person. Say something to that person that's being inappropriate to me. Why do I always have to be the angry black man? So that's why I sat on the code of conduct, because you're not going to have a conversation about me, and I'm not in the room. So that's why I sat on the code of conduct. Did I do a lot? No, I took a lot of notes and paid a lot of attention and did a lot of research, just like my colleagues. But once again, you're not going to have a conversation about the black guy and the black guy not beat at the table. So this is really tough for me to sit here and listen to this, and then for somebody to say that we mandatory report, where, or is my mandatory reporter? Where, where they at? I'm still looking for the, where they at? Because ain't nobody mandatory, and ain't nobody reported for me. Anyway, I enjoyed this to a degree, because I got to see the true people who I work with. You know what I'm saying? So this information will be, I, I don't know if it'll be helpful, because it didn't help me, and I don't want to make that about me, but there's other people of color in the city of Davenport. I am not the sole black person that lives in Davenport, Iowa. So I'm not that guy. There are other people of color. There's Latinos, there's Asian, there's African. There are so many people in this melting pot city of Davenport, Iowa, that we're overlooking just because, you know why? Because it doesn't have anything to do with them. And y'all can sit there if y'all want to. Y'all heard Alderman Jobjen say what he said. If you don't like what's happening, then next year is time to vote. So it's up to you. We don't need representation of everything up here, but you damn sure need somebody that will represent you and the community. We can't just sit idly by and tell you, I'm going to report it and don't report it. You know why? Because I'm cushioning. I'm safe. I'm in my world. That doesn't work anymore. It's 2024. It's about to be 2025. And is it okay that these people make these hundreds and thousands of dollars, and they just sit idly by and watch people get abused verbally and whatever, but it's okay, because if you say something to them, because I'll give you an example. Alderman Kelly, he's normally not like that. I mean, you know, we'll have a talk with him. Why do I get that conversation? But when you offend me, all of a sudden, I'm the bully, I'm the bad guy. So once again, I'm gonna take it back to compassion, passion. My passion is the same as your passion. Why is my passion scary? When you can be passionate, oh, it's passion for his job. But now you have concerns for Alderman Kelly. So let's make it clear that when we have these rules and regulations, I'm glad you guys are asking, but continuously ask, make sure that these rules are for everybody. Just not for the select few. So when you want to get rid of somebody, let's have these rules apply to the select few, so therefore, everybody else skates and slides by. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Reinartz.
Thank you. I share the sentiments of both Alderman Kelly and Alderman Jobjen, and I just want to thank them for working with me, coming from a private sector, running a company, moving into the public sector, where I'm part of an organization, a group chartering the direction of a city. It was informative and pleasurable, as you can tell from some of our comments. We all share kind of a different outlook on life. I have different life experiences, but it was educational, helpful, and a pleasure to interact with my three colleagues putting this thing together. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else? I would ask, since I'm going to request that it be put on discussion, I would ask that our corporate council look into whether or not we are mandatory reporters. That was not my understanding, but since that has been brought up, I would certainly respectfully request that corporate council look into that. Thank you. Seeing no one else, this item will move on to the next agenda item. That is item number two. A resolution appointing Mr. Douglas K. Maxxiner as a city administrator, a city of Davenport city administrator, and approving a related employment agreement. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this matter? Is there anyone from council? Alderman Jobjen.
Thank you. I just want to first start by saying thanks to our acting city administrator, Ms. Gleason. Also, thanks to our former interim city administrator, Ms. Merritt, that have served and are currently serving in these roles to, to keep us going. I want to also say thanks for being allowed to be part of the, the process, right? All ten of us on the council were able to interview each of the candidates, which was very valuable. I'm excited. I, I thank Mr. Maxxiner for stepping up to the plate, and I look forward to somebody that is sincerely interested in working for the council, working for the citizens of Davenport, and then leading a very large organization of staff in a good, positive way. And so I'll be looking to vote positively on this next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I want to ditto that. I look forward to working with Mr. Maxximer as well. It's a shame we had to spend all that money to go across the street, but I look forward to working with Mr. Maxximer as well. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. And also, thank you to Allison Fleming, the, and her HR department. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing all of the materials and the volume of paperwork and everything else in the process, and they, the burden of that also, you know, felt greatly to them. So thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to working with the gentleman as well.
Anyone else from council? I will then make a, a quick comment, and then I will see if the mayor wants to make a comment. I will echo the sentiment of my colleagues in terms of looking forward to working with him. And, and more importantly, I look forward to turning the proverbial page for the city of Davenport. I think it'll be the one step in the right direction in getting our city back on track and on, and bringing us all together. Mayor, do you have, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank everybody involved, the special committee folks for taking the time, many days, to both pick the recruiting company and going through the semifinalists and finalists, and then making a three recommendation, and then the respective panels of stakeholders, union members, et cetera, department heads, city council folks, a well-rounded, comprehensive discussion. And then to the folks that are sitting here at the dais, appreciate the thoughtful and in-depth discussion to make sure that the person that is selected for this job is top-notch, and I believe we have done that. So thank you, everybody involved. I know it was a little bit of a long process, but it was inclusive, it was comprehensive, and well-rounded, and, and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak.
All right. Moving on to the third and final agenda item on the finance agenda. Motion approving the city of Davenport's continued participation in the U.S. Bank Iowa Card Consortium. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this matter? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, this item would move on. I would now request that Alderwoman Burkholder, please set our agenda.
I would like to move items two and three to the consent agenda, and item one on to discussion.
I see a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, this motion, the motion carries. Now yield the floor back to Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Burkholder. Next area is other, is there other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? We have a couple items, but first, we need to suspend the rules. So is there a motion for suspension of the rules so we can vote on those items? There's a motion in a second. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll, knowing we need eight for suspension. Ardone?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
And T. Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are now suspended, so the first item is a resolution approving a street closure request on the listed date and time for outdoor event. Davenport Community School District, West High School Homecoming Parade, thirty-five oh five West Locust Street, four-thirty PM to seven PM, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Closures are police-controlled, and you can see them there. Is there any public with comment?
Will an alderman please move the resolution?
Second.
Motion in a second and discussion from alderfolks. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll on this resolution. Newton?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
And Ardone?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That resolution's adopted, and the next area is a motion approving a noise variance request on the listed date and time for an outdoor event, which is the Davenport Community Schools West High School Homecoming Parade. There's an attached parade route, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four,